Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. Momentarily, we're going to start our scheduled council meeting for April 7th. But before we do that, we have a public hearing on two ordinances that were read into the record for first reading at the previous council meeting, and tonight they will have their public hearing. And these are going to be ordinances 1179 and 1180, so I'll start with the first ordinance. So ordinance 1179 is concerning approving budget amendment 2025-06 for peer repairs and redecking. This is an ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Havertide Grace, Maryland, by the authority of Article 11 E of the Maryland Constitution, the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, and Section 37 of Havertide Grace City Charter for the purpose of amending the city budget for fiscal year 2025 to address the reallocation of funds for the City of Havertide Grace for fiscal year 2025. This is a public hearing on ordinance 1179. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this ordinance? Any comments from the council? Without any comments from the public or the council, I now end the public hearing on ordinance 1179. The time is 7:02. Next public hearing will be on ordinance 1180, ordinance 1180 concerning approving budget amendment 2025-07 to fund unanticipated cost increases. An ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Havertide Grace, by the authority of Article 11 E of the Maryland Constitution, the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, and Section 37 of the Havertide Grace City Charter for the purpose of amending the city budget for fiscal year 2025 to address the reallocations of funds for the City of Havertide Grace for fiscal year 2025. Anybody in the audience this evening to speak on ordinance 1180? Any comments from the council? Okay, without any comments from the council or the public, I will close the public hearing on ordinance 1180. The time is 7:03. See, I wasn't so bad, was I? I told you we'd get right to our council meeting pretty quick. Okay. Okay, good evening. We start our public, I'm sorry, we start our council meeting of the Havertide Grace Mayor and City Council. The date is April 7th, 2025. The time is now 7:04 PM. I will call the roll. Council President Ringz Sucker.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson.
Here.
Councilmember Booker.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Boyer.
Here.
Councilmember Shenegas.
Here.
All council members are present and accounted for, please join me for the Pledge of Legions and opening prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for kind of remaining standing, and I'd like to call forward. I know on the agenda it says Armguard Brown, but Armguard's not here. Oh, is Armguard here? Oh, well, that's you, sir. Okay, I thought I saw you early, and I'm like, well, that's not, you're not Armguard. Okay, all right, we're gonna, that's right, in the bullpen here. So, welcome, sir. We appreciate you pinching here, and glad to have you as always. Thank you.
I'm glad to be here. That's a little surprise, but that's okay. The Lord has everything under control. Let's pray. Father Grant, to this council and the mayor, and all of the officials of this city, wisdom and knowledge, peace, favor, so that everything that's done will further the peace, security, and growth of this community. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate it. Thank you. Everybody, please be seated. Item number five, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting on March 17, 2025. Council have motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Booker, second by Councilmember Jones. Questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'll be abstaining from this vote.
Okay, Councilmember Robertson will be abstaining from the vote on the minutes. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. City council meeting minutes are approved 5:00 and affirmative. We're going to go to item six, comments from citizens. This is the part of the evening, if you're here to speak on an agenda item, now's the time to do so. If you're here to speak on any other matter of city business, now's the time to do so also. Normally what I do is I will call upon anyone who filled out a form to speak first. Once I go through the forms, I will open the floor at large. All you need to do is simply raise your hand, be recognized. We're asking that everybody keep their comments to three minutes, and even if you're coming up here to speak about multiple topics, please keep your comments to three minutes for all topics. And what I'll do is I'll start off with Joe Miller and Scott Hurst, Representative Susquehanna Good evening, President Miller. Good evening, Chief Hurst. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council President, council members. As President of Susquehanna Host Company, I'm here to ask you for support of the ordinance to change the funding formula for the Susquehanna Host Company. Right now, you're listing it as item C on the agenda. The original formula, I believe, started back in 2001, and from approximately 2010 to 2022, our income from this tax rate never changed due to the real estate market crash. We have received supplemental income from the city for breathing apparatus, for our fireboat, and for loan reductions throughout these years. The women and the men in the Susquehanna Host Company have achieved the highest ISO rating of a Class 1. This rating is only one of three Class 1s in the state of Maryland. The other two are the City of Annapolis, which is 100% career department, and the City of Baltimore, which is also 100% career department, and then the 100% volunteer fire department, Susquehanna Host Company, as the third one. In October of 2023, Susquehanna Host Company ordered a new aerial unit to be placed at our House 5 on Chappa Road. That vehicle's going to cost us $1.7 million. This unit is not going to be delivered to us until February of 2026. Also, in October of 2023, we ordered a fire engine to be placed at the Market Street Firehouse at the cost of $1.1 million. That vehicle can't be, won't be delivered to us until August of 2026. As soon as the fire, as soon as the aerial unit is delivered to us in '26, we hope to order a second aerial unit, pretty close to the design of the first one, and that unit will go on the, down the street at the Juniata Street Firehouse. We're estimating that vehicle's going to cost us $2 million and won't be delivered to us until 2029 or 2030. We're going to follow quickly behind that with another fire engine in order to go at our Revolution Street Firehouse, and follow right behind that with another fire engine to go at our Union Avenue Fire Station. Providing ISO Class 1 fire protection to the City of Havertide Grace is not cheap. I personally believe the 3.16 tax rate in the ordinance is a bargain for the city and the citizens of Havertide Grace, and the women and the men of the Susquehanna Host Company deeply appreciate that funding formula number. That's basically all I want to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Miller.
Just to elude on what Joe said, in addition to that, we've also taken on two of the career medic units from DES, which ran last year 2,990 calls out of our Chappa Road Station, our Market Street Station. So, although we're not paying for the crews there, the county is, but we are supplementing lots of costs, electrical bills, utilities, things of that nature, and some supervision over those crews, which has been a phenomenal relationship between DES, the career crews, and the Susquehanna Host Company. So, we added EMS into our repertoire for things to do on top of everything else. Like Joe said, in 2008, the housing crisis hit, and the property tax rate seemed like a good idea back in 2001, but when things stagnated for over a decade, we got no raises, and the city was able to help us out like he said, SCBA, airboat, boat, motor for a boat, many other things that you guys have been very helpful with, including even covering our insurance every year. So, with that being said, I don't know if there's any questions. We've been talking to the mayor, Stephen Gammator, and now Chris Ritchie for several years about changing the formula, but it was built to, as Havertide Grace built, we would get more funding, and that just did not happen that way, and this will catch us up to where we should be.
Councilmember Robertson.
Hey, Chief, Joe, thank you for all you guys do. Can you just tell the public, how many volunteers are with Susquehanna Host Company?
About 140 volunteers, men and women. We have 90 that are active that ride the fire trucks every day. We have a lot of administrative people, lifetime members. Joe's lifetime president is a lifetime member. 56 EMTs, all of our, we have 80 fire line officers qualified members in Hartford County. Just to put that in perspective, Hartford County has about 220 fire line approved officers. We have 80 of them. So, we have almost a third of the fire line officers approved, and that fire line training is numerous, numerous, numerous classes. So, we are not only fast, we get out on everything, we had zero fails last year, zero responses dropped, and we're also the highest trained, one of the highest trained in the state of Maryland.
That's awesome. Yeah, thanks again for all you do, all you guys, and I appreciate you.
Chief, I'm sorry, you have a question? Go ahead.
I have two questions.
Yep.
First of all, thank you all. You guys are amazing, and you do a lot of public service as well. I think that's also important to point out. Can you quickly go over the age of some of your equipment?
Oh, absolutely. Well, the one that's being replaced, the engine is being, I'm glad you asked that. The engine that's being replaced is a 2007, so it would be 18, 19 years old when it comes in, and we bought that, it was $513,000, and now it's $1.1 million. So, it's doubled in price. It's just every, everything in America's doubled. The ladder truck, the quid that we're going to replace on Chappa Road was $700,000, and that's now $1.7 million. All right, and this is going to be a challenge for all fire companies across the United States of America. You know, the price of fire apparatus has gone insane. So, but we have to keep buying, obviously. Once a fire truck hits about 15 years, you hit that point of maintenance costs versus viability, and that's when you try to replace it between 15 and 20 years.
And where do you put them? Like, do you sell them to another fire company?
We sell them. Yep, we have a place up in Pennsylvania. We've sold by our last five or six, who's actually a friend of mine, it's called Command Fire Apparatus, and we usually get 50 grand or so.
Okay, so that helps pay for the cost down.
Yeah, 50 grand, 1.7 million, yeah, bring it down, you know, a little bit.
And so, yeah.
I'm not jumping up for 50 grand, 1.7 million dollars.
The other thing we hear from the county executive's office is they're, in the future, that the future of Hartford County is that it's going to be a paid fire service. And quite frankly, if you look at municipalities all around, whether they may be in Pennsylvania or even just down 95, we're seeing that more and more often, that volunteer companies are turning over into paid services. What is the future, and what is the timeline?
The future of Hartford County is a combination system, which is volunteer and career. Hopefully, different stations is the way the plans are going now. It's probably closer than you think, it's probably within 18 months. I would hope six months, but I don't think that's going to happen. There's been committees formed to give an outlay of which station should be first. Havertide Grace isn't even on the chart right now. These stations that are going to open are going to be in stations, they're in areas, the busier areas are very busy, where the volunteer stations just can't keep up right now. Same thing happened with the career medic, with the EMS, how quick that went. So, it is within a few years, I would say, could be sooner, but it's going to be placed in station in areas where they're not getting fire trucks out. Obviously, we don't have that problem whatsoever, don't anticipate that problem. Municipalities are their own authority, have a jurisdiction. We did that, we passed that legislation in 2010, maybe, I think Wayne was mayor, that the county just can't come into Aberdeen, Bella, or Havertide Grace and take over your fire and rescue. So, we are, I am the authority having jurisdiction for Havertide Grace, so they can't just come in and take over. And let's face it, and I know Bob, County Executive, he wants as many volunteers as possible. The more volunteers he has, the less he's got to pay out, because when it does start going and going career, what the teachers and the sheriff's office, everybody else complaining about right now, is going to be a drop in the bucket to what the fire departments are going to need. You're talking hundreds of millions of dollars, if you had an all career fire company. So, the more volunteers the county executive has, and the county has, the cheaper it is for him, and I wouldn't rule out in the future, there's going to be probably a tax increase to cover, a combination system. When I say combination, it's a combination of career and volunteer mixed together.
And can you talk a little bit about the funding formula? Currently, Hartford County provides a funding formula to stations across the county, and before, it was not necessarily fair for the City of Havertide Grace, but you've worked...
Yep, we've worked two years now. It's been a five-year process, but two hard years on new funding formula, where the host company didn't think we were getting our fair share. We were getting allotment of like Darnington Fire Company, Whiteford Fire Company. We were running triple the calls, putting quadruple the fire apparatus on the road, and we were getting that money because we were spending our money with Company 59, the ambulance corps. Well, when EMS for all of Hartford County defunct in February of '23, it became just a fire department formula. So, EMS was withdrawn out of that, the ambulance corps' money was moved to the EMS budget, and then we redid the formula. I'm the one that actually came up with half the formula. So, the formula we have now gave us a good raise. It keeps us in line between, you got Bella, who's the busiest, and you got Joppa in Abington and Aberdeen. It's got us right between Aberdeen and Foster, which is where we should be. So, we were able to do the formula that will last for the future. It has a measure of performance in it, the better you do, the more money you get. $2 million of the 7.5 million is based on the measures of performance, and also, it's built for when the career system comes in. When the career system comes in, and they start running calls, that's going to affect the numbers. So, the company still doing the job, we'll get more money, so.
Great, thank you. I think you all are of exceptional value for the citizens of Havertide Grace, and I really appreciate all the volunteer work that you all do in service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh, just real quick, I know we're running short. I just want to say, hey, Grace on top, you guys are just doing an amazing job. I try to say the host company every single night that I sit up here, and that comes from my heart. I cover my long line back in Sullivan, Illinois, so I have a deep appreciation. I love it when that siren comes off. I don't care what time of night, it gives me a good feeling to know that brave men and women are out there doing the tough job, so I definitely appreciate that. The ladder truck up at Division 5, that's one of the ones being replaced?
Yes.
Fantastic. I know that's the only one on the east side of, on the west side of 40, right?
Yes, we have an engine up there also.
Okay.
But you see all the building going on with the green property and Bully Rock and everything up there. Our plans from 2001, trying to drop a firehouse in the middle of what was going on up there, has worked out perfect. You see the building that's went on around, around that firehouse. And that firehouse is our second busiest now.
I would imagine.
So, about 45% of our total calls are on that side of Route 40 now.
Right. A lot of citizens don't realize...
So, it's amazing, how many calls are up there.
That District 1, 2, 3, and 4 on the other side of 40, and District 5 is up on the hill, affectionately referred to as the Chapel House, you know, but hey, thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
And Chief, and President Miller, just once, I actually was going to wait till the ordinance came up for my comments, but let me just add one minute of comment since you're here, and we're all talking about this proposed piece of legislation that's going to end up being introduced a little later this evening. So, as Chief Miller said, a resolution from a very long time, 20-some years ago, allocated two cents on the tax rate to the Susquehanna Host Company. So, whatever your total amount of properties were worth from Maryland State Department of Taxation Assessment, the host company allocation was two cents. And so, I remember when the economy tanked in 2008, 2009, you guys were getting $321,000 a year from the city, and it was actually going to go down.
Yeah.
Because the state started dropping the values of the homes because of the market crashing, so we did everything we could to do, you know, a level funding resolution to keep them, but you guys were stuck at like 321 for years. Of course, the price of everything else went up, and then, you know, five, six, seven years ago, the two of you would come to my office every January and be like, you know, here's what we, here's what we need to operate, and the question was always, you know, should we just increase the allocation of the property rate, or should we just kind of help you on top of things? So, it's, I just want everyone to know that the city administration and the host company has worked very closely over the years. They still got that two-cent tax allocation, and now, I mean, I think it was almost $400,000 because the value of the homes have gone up, and so the two cents is worth more now. But the city's been supplementing other things along the way, just very same, apparatus, insurance, gas, stuff like that, so almost to the tune of almost $700,000 a year, because that's just what it takes to operate it. And so, they've been very, the Susquehanna Host Company's been very patient with me and my administration, because I kept saying, you know, one day, because the assessments for the City of Havertide Grace come out once every three years, and it came out this year, and we got a substantial increase, a little, just under $500,000 in property value revenue. We didn't raise the tax rate, it's just with all the construction and the reassessments to value... to value homes gone. So I just want everyone to know, what this ordinance is doing is taking it from two cents to 3.6 cents, which is going to take them right to what we're giving them last year anyway. But what it's doing is giving them that money by right. So the good chief and the good president don't have to come in and talk to a politician every year, whether it's me or whoever else in the future, and ask for that money. This is guaranteeing the men and women of the host company, okay, the city's recognized that this isn't 2001 anymore, and you're doing triple the calls, you know, three times the responsibility, you know, more volunteers than you ever had. And there's no argument in the city that our fire department is second to none, and they provide us with great public safety. So just so everyone understands this ordinance is, it's taken them from the two cents that they've been at for over 20 years to 3.6 cents. But what that's going to do is that's going to take them from 400,000 to about 700,000 that every year they don't have to come ask them for. So they're getting the same thing as they were last year, but you guys have it by right in which you should.
And hopefully, as the town, city builds more houses and everything, the formula works the way it should, we get those little chunks.
Correct. The more the assessments go up, the more it builds, and the more that 3.6 cents is worth. So anyway, I just wanted to clear that up, and again, I appreciate you guys coming out. I know you're busy tonight, but thanks for coming out and speaking to explain to the council and to the members in the public who are listening, the evolution of this funding formula. Because I know a lot of people have asked me, you know, we have an amazing fire department, all volunteers, where do you get their money from? You know, and, you know, a good chunk's from the city, a good chunk's from the county, you know.
I could tell you after this, the good chunk will be from the city.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, but I mean, I tell people all the time, I mean, I try to look at cities of comparable size. If we had to pay you guys and pay for everything, what are you talking about, six, seven million dollars a year?
Easy.
Easy. Yeah.
Another thing I want to reiterate too, is how much we do for our mutual aid companies too. You know, running to Aberdeen, Cecil County, Level, Joppa, Abington, we go all over the place to help them, you know, with the calls. So we do an awful lot of what we call mutual aid.
Yes.
There's a fire in Aberdeen right now, there's a very good possibility we send four fire trucks over there. We do it every week. So same in Cecil County.
Well, Chief Hurst and President Miller, the citizens of Havant Grace are eternally grateful for the men and women who get up at 2:00 in the morning to go on fire calls.
We're eternally grateful too. We've had, you know, from David Craig to Mayor Doherty to you, and all the city councils, we've, you know, always had a wonderful relationship in my 20 years as being the chief of the fire department. So it's a phenomenal relationship that we have with everybody, so we appreciate it.
Thank you, we appreciate it. I think your three minutes is up. I'm joking, I'm joking, I'm joking. I'm kidding.
Thanks, guys.
I'd call forward, Ms. Carrie Parsons. So I see you have a...
Three of them, sir.
Okay, all right.
But if you don't mind, sir, I would like to talk differently at different times, so that way the message can come across clearly. If you don't mind, sir.
Okay.
You're the first one, if you don't mind.
Ms. Parsons, just real quick, not a problem tonight, because if you prepared to speak on something, then I don't want to mess up your prepared speech.
Yes, sir.
In the future, our goal is going to be...
Three minutes.
Three minutes per person, whether it's one topic or three topics. But please, by all means, since you're prepared, then go ahead and do three separate ones.
Thank you, sir. Council President, council members, mayor, citizens, chief, president. I'm here to discuss, I appreciate the opportunity to discuss the ordinance regarding the Susquehanna Host Company, and personally, this is my personal thoughts. We're undercutting them at a 3.6. The men and women of this organization, this volunteer organization and everything that they do, and with the tariffs that have come down, we're undercutting this vital public safety resource to our city and to our communities. We had the different, I researched, we had the different calendar resolutions, 2001-04, 2010-04, and it's proven time and time again that this administration and previous administrations have supported the police, the fire, and our ambulance corps. And we need to make sure we continue to support them. But I think unfortunately, at 3.6 rate, we're undercutting them with what is on the horizon with the current economy. There is one area that I noticed that was not mentioned, and that had to do with the ambulance corps. They're vital to our service. I see them out all the time. They're constantly going out on calls besides the ones that we have currently from Hartford County. But maybe we need to look at also supporting that organization too at the same time. I hope we can assist them further in the future, maybe through a different resolution, to possibly give them increment increases at a 0.25 or 0.15, so that way they're able to continue with what they need to do to keep us safe. Thank you, mayor. Council President.
Thank you, Ms. Parsons. Now, Ms. Parsons, do you want to speak about the other ones? You can...
I'm Dame Brammich tonight.
Not a problem. I know you filled out two other forms, so please continue.
Okay. The other one, sir, has to do with the ordinance regarding amending Chapter 173 subdivision regulations regarding waivers. Again, thank you. When my mother had passed away, I only kind of received a really quick, down-dirty overview between the differences between a deed and a title when it came to property. And honestly, I left the attorneys up in Michigan to figure it all out. I wasn't in a mindset. So please kind of forgive my ignorance, but how does a parcel become unrecorded? And maybe you can just explain it a little bit. I'm just a little confused on that whole subject, sir.
I'm sorry.
I'm a little confused as to how a deed became unrecorded, and why it would require a waiver. I'm just a little confused. I was hoping somebody could explain a little bit.
Was there a specific line that you're referring to, ma'am?
This is the ordinance, we have not read the ordinance regarding amending Chapter 173 subdivision regulations regarding waivers.
And in the packet, it should have a line...
I can go to that, sir.
We just want to answer the question as thoroughly as possible.
Okay, it's Section 173-7 subdivision waivers. It starts on line number 41, sir.
Oh, tracking, okay.
I was just a little confused as how a parcel wasn't recorded.
So Shaq.
So there are portions of the city of Havant Grace that date back to its original incorporation, which was back in, I believe, 1785, which was a grant by the state legislature, based on the will of Mr. Robert Stokes, who left the will, in his will, the city of Havant Grace land, right? So some of those original parcels were never recorded because they're part of the old Hopper's map and other maps, okay? So the legislation that you're talking about, I don't believe that that unrecorded parcel language is new in the statute, that's not being cited.
Right.
So that was when the prior, whoever adopted that previously, understood that to be the case. So if there's an unrecorded parcel, then there's no application to that provision. The main reason for the provisions that were for the amendment, separate from the unrecorded parcel, is because as part of the Amtrak Bridge process, there may need to be subdivisions, and under their process, federal law is, preempts state law, municipal law. So it was just to make it clear by our code that those processes can be done internally, administratively, and not have to go through planning commission, because it would be overridden by federal law anyway.
Okay, thank you so much. I do appreciate it. Okay, the third thing, sir, is the ordinance concerning the amending of Chapter 198 water, sewer, relating to grease, oil, and interceptors. I did provide to, an email to Dr. Ritchie and to you, Council President. Thank you very kindly for the great reply. I also provided you with additional information. There are a couple, there is just one, one small thing. I wasn't able to cross-reference it on over to any fees or anything, but we're mentioning a fee, and I think we need to also be able to do, if we need to do a link over to that, so that way we can show a continuity between the two. The other had to do with, I wanted to, I did provide to you, sorry, the breakdown of a potential suggestion of how one would be, the services rendered, and then also how public works would be able to itemize also, and the use of their equipment for diagnostic purposes. But there's one thing that I do wish to point out, and that is, thank you for putting this together, because it is showing that there's limited warranties on all of the capital projects that we're doing, with water and sewer, down at the treatment plant. And one thing that will never be covered happens to do with negligence, and that's from fog, our fat oil and grease. And I'm very frugal, I live a simple life, and I do applaud the ordinance as a way to protect our investment in our new city sewer lines, and especially with all of the capital improvements that we have done and are doing over at the wastewater treatment plant. So I do appreciate your time in what the email, and hopefully we can see some improvements on to the other side of adding it into the fees chapter. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Parsons. I'd like to call forward, Mr. John, I hope I say your last name right, Fontarosa? Did I say your last name correctly?
Yes, you did.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, sir. May please have your name and address for the record.
Do you need it, or you have it? I'm asking.
If you wouldn't mind just speaking at the record.
Oh, it's John Fontarosa, I live at 216 Heatherway.
Welcome, sir.
Hi, thank you. I just prepared a RIN thing. As a taxpaying homeowner in this town for the last 12 years, I feel aggrieved by the Board of Electors' April 4th decision to allow Vicki Miller to be on the city council ballot. The board originally ruled that they were ineligible to run. At the city council hearing held last Monday, it was my understanding that the additional support Miller provided did not meet the evidentiary requirements for establishing residency. This was based on something that was my understanding of what was said by the town's attorney. At that time, I felt that the matter should have been dropped, but was unable to speak based on the rules in place, which was fine, I understand that. As a federal auditor for over 20 years, I'm well aware of testimonial evidence being the weakest form of evidence. People can and often do lie for numerous reasons. There's a reason we have things in place, rules in place for establishing residency. Our country's elections are part of what makes this country great. The requirements to prove residency and run for council are in place so that citizens of our great city can have faith in the people running our government, knowing they are part of our community, and have our community's interest at heart. Losing faith in our government is not something I think you want your constituency to experience. We must know that the rules have to be followed by all, not just a select few. These rules especially must be followed by the very people asking to serve on the board that establishes the rules. This person had ample time to follow our state and city rules for establishing residency, and chose not to for their own reasons. For example, they still flaunt our state's rules by having a vehicle registered in Pennsylvania that they drive, although our law clearly states that they have 60 days to register it in the state. I fail to see how a letter can be used to establish residency. Would I be able to provide a letter attesting to somebody's residency and then have that person vote in the upcoming election in May? No, because that would not be the bar needed to establish the right to vote. Why should it be different for a person asking to run for office? In closing, I ask that our city council hold a hearing on Vicki Miller's candidacy and vote to uphold our city's requirement to bar them from running this particular cycle. Faith in our elected leaders is a bedrock principle, and once it's lost, it's not easily regained. This request is being made pursuant to Section 10, Conduct of Registration and Elections Appeals, subsection B, that states, persons aggrieved by any act of the board may, within 10 days of the aggrieved act, appeal in writing to the mayor and city council, which shall review the RIN complaint and render a RIN decision prior to the next election, or within 10 days of receipt of the RIN appeal, whichever is earlier. I'd like the record to note that I gave Dr. Ritchie a copy of this RIN request as required. I want to thank you for your time and hearing me out. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. I'd call forward Christina Amara. Good evening and welcome to the council meeting. May please have your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Christina Amara. My address is 125 St. Andrew Court in Aberdeen. Can I leave this with you?
Perfect.
I am the founder of the Sea of Hope Foundation. We're a nonprofit charity organization that supports families who've suffered from infancy and pregnancy loss. We like to talk about the taboo, breaking the silence, and helping those families who've suffered from that loss. And one of the things on the agenda is our second Wave of Light event, held in October, where families from Hartford County and other counties around can come out and honor the life of their child. We have an upcoming event on May 31st at Concord Point Park, where we invite those families to come out and walk in honor of their child as well. Part of this event not only helps the families to honor their memory of their little one, but it helps fund for our bereavement boxes, our scholarship program, and just statistics and data that we've accumulated. Last year in May, we ordered 60 bereavement boxes. And if you're not familiar with a bereavement box, when a family loses a baby during pregnancy or delivery or infancy, the hospital usually provides a box that's filled with keepsakes for those families. That's the box that gets taken home with those families rather than their child. We ordered 60 of them and donated half to Upper Chesapeake and half to Union Hospital in Elkton. I contacted Upper Chesapeake in February, and out of the 30 boxes we donated, there was only seven left. So funding for that is part of what we do. We help families with funeral costs, and we want to make sure that families know that they're not alone. And one of our ways is to have events like this. And I have to tell you, when we hosted the Wave of Light last year, I was kind of blown away by how many people showed up. We felt the feedback was that this was needed, we needed this. Prior to us donating the boxes to Upper Chesapeake and Elkton, the last donation they had received was prior to COVID, and most of the nurses were buying the boxes themselves to donate. So in the past year, we've been able to help five families with funeral costs. We are, we just got our end to our brief scholarship application, and we're choosing a recipient this month. And yeah, we are just hoping that we can host again in such a lovely area. We love the Concord Point Park, it just fits with us, and families seem to enjoy to come out, and it's just nice and serene. I just wanted to call, or come in and talk about it. And one more thing, we invite the city of Havant Grace citizens and everyone out to Aberdeen to host our mermaid run and Under the Sea Bash. It's a family-friendly event. We have mermaids, pirates, acrobats, vendors, and that will be held in August, August 23rd. And then on August 24th, we have a tea under the sea, where families can come out and have a afternoon tea brunch with real mermaids and water fairies. have a afternoon tea brunch with real mermaids and water fairies. So.
Nice. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is the last pre-filled-out form I have, so now I will open the floor at large. Just please raise your hand, be recognized. Good evening, my friend, welcome back.
It's good to be here. I'll try to be real short for you. I want to extend each of you my personal invitation to come to Blessing by the Bay on May 5th, so that you can receive the blessings that we pronounce there. This applies to every member of the council, all the police officers, all the firemen, everybody, all of your staff. Come out. We do bless all of you. We do pronounce a blessing over all of you. And if you come out and you feel like you didn't get enough of a blessing, come to me and I'll give you one right on top of that. I love doing blessings. It's a Sunday. It's, May 4th, did I say May 5th?
Yeah, yeah.
It's a different year.
May 4th be with you.
Yeah, May, May the 4th be with me, okay. Star Wars it is. Okay, so it's Star Wars Day. I like that. But please, ride your motorcycle.
My motorcycle needs a little work done to it, so it can take all the blessing it can get right now, so.
Okay, well, if you have to, push your motorcycle. Come out so we can bless you.
All right. Bless this transmission.
Thank you for the correction. I, I'll take all the help I can get.
So I, I offer that any Harley rider can, can borrow my Indian, no problem.
If I pump up the bicycle tires, he can use my trike.
Thank you, sir. The floor is open, please raise your hand, be recognized. Any comments from the council? Okay, thank you, we're gonna move on to appointments.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I apologize, should have handled this earlier. Item number 7A for Planning Commission, we're going to remove Mr. Harry Miller at this time, he will be added back later.
Okay, any objections, council? Okay, fine, we're gonna remove item 7A from the, from this evening's agenda. Okay, thank you very much, Council President. And that takes us to item 8. Oh, boy. We got a new planning director. I know everybody, I know it's been the elephant in the room, everybody's looking at this gentleman in the new planning director's seat. So now I get to introduce everybody to our new planning director, Mr. Jeff Goins. And he started work today, correct? And Mr. Goins comes to us from Montgomery County, who's nine years, I'm sorry, Howard County, Howard County, I'm not apologizing, Howard County. Howard County, big apology on that. But nine, nine years as deputy planner of Howard County, and prior to that, you served at the City of Savannah, Georgia?
Correct.
Yes, and I will give you a chance, when we have a director's comments, I'll give you a chance to introduce yourself to everybody, but I just wanted to let everyone know that when we voted on your contract at a previous council meeting, I mentioned you a little bit, and, and I signed the contract, and you started today, but normally what we do when we have public officials who start for the city, we gotta swear them in. So, sir, if you can please join me.
Council President, would you want to?
Sure.
Councilmember Snegas is our Planning Committee Chair, and Council President, would you Mr. Goins, I'm gonna ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I'm going to say the word "I." When I say the word "I," please repeat the word "I," but also say your name. Aye?
Aye, Jeff Goins.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will fulfill.
That I will fulfill.
The requirement of.
Requirement of.
Office I'm about to assume.
Office I'm about to assume.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
Bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
State of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Without fear of favor or prejudice.
This evening, we have no recognitions. Item 10, Proclamations.
Without fear or favor of prejudice.
And we do have two proclamations.
The charge of duties.
The charge of duties.
And the first proclamation we'd like to read is the Month of the Military Child.
As a director of planning.
As a director of planning.
For the City of Havertory Grace.
For the City of Havertory Grace.
And if I could call forward all the participants in the audience who are here this evening
With best of my abilities.
This is something the City of Havertory Grace has observed last year, and the primary driver
With best of my abilities.
You got it, sir. Welcome, yeah. Thank you very much.
for that presentation, proclamation.
Comments?
and organizers of this, of this month are here to me today.
Let's go on, your military child.
I'm gonna be bright, too.
And I'm gonna ask in a minute to say a few words to the, to the public at large, because
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do that purple.
this is gaining momentum, and it's getting more and more popular, and we want everyone,
Yes.
I need a microphone again. Sorry, Kenny, I should have said something earlier.
Okay.
especially the viewing audience at home, to realize what this is about and why their lighthouse is going to turn purple next week. And so more people will have a chance to come out and support that reason, take pictures in front of it. So Mel?
Good evening, city council members and neighbors. My name is Melissa Frazkery Santiago. I'm the founder and executive director of Abruda Chesapeake, and a proud Havertory Grace resident. Abruda Chesapeake's mission is to empower military-connected and English learner students by organizing inclusive educational and cultural events in the community. Advocate for the needs of both groups while educating both the school and local community. Here with me tonight are Isabella and Kai, they're youth, part of their youth committee meeting, and also military kids. Vicki Jones is also part of our board, and retired Lieutenant Colonel Alex Milugo, who is the president of our board.
Good evening. My name is Isabella, and one of the reasons I joined this organization is because I understand firsthand what it feels like to be born in a place without any family. Hearing the story of how my dad planned his first R and R while in Afghanistan, so he could make it on time for my first birthday and go back, moving every other year and starting over in a new school and new community, the things we go through never go away just because we have a permanent home. We still need support to adjust to this new life after retirement. Three years ago, I remember my brother Kai meeting with Mayor Martin and asking him if he could light up the lighthouse purple as a symbol of support for military kids, and I am grateful he has continued this tradition ever since. We are grateful for this proclamation, which will bring awareness to military kids in our community, and please remember to wear purple on April 15th to celebrate the children of active-duty service members, reserve, veterans, and Gold Star families.
Well, thank you very much, and that was good, I tell you. Well done. And I also have Councilmember Jones and Council President Rinksey, who themselves were military children. Councilmember Jones, is everything that Isabella just said correct?
Absolutely. I, I feel so strange here, I identify with Sea of Hope tonight, and then also with Month of Military Child, so today's the V-Day. But I'm just, it, it is, it's a, it's a horrible experience as a child to have to move every one to three years. And I'm so thankful to Mel for bringing awareness to this, and the things that we go through, and that stay with us, you know, throughout our lifetime.
Yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about, about different schools and everything. I've been to like nine or 10 different schools, Fort Hood, Texas, Fort Riley, Kansas, Aberdeen, Minot, North Dakota, Heidelberg, Germany, Zweiburg in Germany, a few other places. But ended up here because I love being in Havertory Grace, the best place in the world I've ever been, and thank you guys so much for what you do. And let me ask you, you guys ever stood up for the National Anthem when you watch a movie? That's what we used to have to do out on post whenever the movies would come on. Any Army brats out there that watch movies out on post, I'm sure that you'll remember that, because it never goes away. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Council President. Council President, did you wear that purple tie intentionally tonight? Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't happenstance.
Vicki, I'm hoping that you're not here also for flood awareness.
Well, and I just want to say, although I'm not a child, my father was in military, but way before I was born, but being a 26-year teacher at Aberdeen Middle School, I have taught many, many students who were on post. And it is gut-wrenching, you know, when they leave halfway through the year, you know, and because in most cases, they're some, usually the nicest kids I teach, and they're just well-adjusted for obvious reasons. And next thing you know, it's like, oh, hey, Mr. Martin, today's my last day. I'm like, what? I mean, and, you know, it's just, and if I feel an emptiness because they're leaving my class, I can only imagine the emptiness that they feel when they're leaving their friends, and once again, everything they've known, and then going to another school. So like I said, this is, this is something that's important to me, too. Even though I haven't lived it, you know, I see it every day and feel it a little bit. And so I would be honored if I could read this into the record. Okay, here we go. Ready? City Havertory Grace Maryland Proclamation, Month of the Military Child, celebrating military children and youth building stronger character and relationships. Whereas there are more than 1.6 million military children who face many challenges and unique experiences as a result of their parent's service. Whereas military families move on average every two to three years, impacting military children through changing schools and support networks. Whereas military children show bravery, fealty, resiliency, by adapting and meeting adversity head-on in an ever-changing environment. Whereas the support of schools, communities, and organizations is vital to the success and well-being of military children. Whereas the, I'm sorry. Whereas the Month of Military Child provides an opportunity to recognize and honor the contributions and sacrifices of military children. Now therefore, I, William T. Martin, Mayor of City Havertory Grace, along with the members of Havertory City Council, do hereby proclaim the Month of April as Month of the Military Child in the City of Havertory Grace, and encourage all citizens to show appreciation for military children by wearing purple on April 15th, 2025, as a visible way to show support, and thank military children for their strength and sacrifices. I'm gonna hand this to you. Very good, and congratulations, we're gonna light the lighthouse purple, okay?
So if you ever doubted the impact that you guys as a community have on military kids, this city welcomed us with open arms when we first moved in between 2014, 2015, and it was the support of the teachers, the librarians, the community itself, when she started the Little Free Library, that made us decide to come back when it was retirement season. We had a conversation where we wanted to go, and there was no discussion. They both agreed that Havertory Grace was home. So when you see military kids, even whether they're here for one year, two years, three years, know that the impact and the support we receive, or they receive from the community, matters. So thank you all for being so supportive.
Thank you very much. [applause] Okay, the second proclamation we had this evening is, is something that we read into the record every year, but it's important that we do it. And if you live in Havertory Grace, you understand Flood Awareness Month. So, so please, this, indulge me as I, as I'm required to read this into the record. City Havertory Grace Proclamation for Flood Awareness Month, whereas the City of Havertory Grace has experienced severe weather in the past in the form of extreme rainfall, hurricane system events, or other events resulting in flooding along Chesapeake Bay, Sutquatch River, and our inland streams, such as Lully Run, Gaches Creek, Fountain Run. This flooding has caused damage and flood losses to homes and buildings in all areas where they are high-risk special flood area, special flood hazard areas, or low-to-moder risk flood zones. And whereas the City Havertory Grace is a volunteer, a voluntary participant in the National Flood Insurance Program that provides residents with the opportunity to protect themselves against flood loss through the purchase of flood insurance, at reduced insurance premium rates, as well as setting higher regulatory standards to reduce the flood risk and potential flood damage to their property. And whereas the reduction of loss of life and property damage can be achieved when appropriate flood preparedness, control, and mitigation measures are taken before flood. And whereas public education and awareness of potential weather hazards and methods for protection are critical to health, safety, and welfare of residents. The City Havertory Grace has declared the Month of April 2025. head-on in an ever-changing environment. Whereas the support of schools, communities, and organizations is vital to the success and well-being of military children. Whereas the month, I'm sorry, whereas the Month of Military Child provides an opportunity to recognize and honor the contributions and sacrifices of military children. Now therefore, I, William T. Martin, Mayor of City of Haverde Grace, along with the members of Haverde Grace City Council, do hereby proclaim the Month of April as Month of the Military Child in the City of Haverde Grace, and encourage all citizens to show appreciation for military children by wearing purple on April 15th, 2025, as a visible way to show support, and thank military children for their strength and sacrifices. I'm gonna hand this to you. Very good, and congratulations, we're gonna light the lighthouse purple, okay?
So, if you ever doubted the impact that you guys as a community have on Military Kids, this city welcomed us with open arms when we first moved in between 2014, 2015, and it was the support of the teachers, the librarians, the community itself, when she started the Little Free Library, that made us decide to come back when it was retirement season. We had a conversation where we wanted to go, and there was no discussion. They both agreed that Haverde Grace was home. So, when you see Military Kids, even whether they're here for one year, two years, three years, know that the impact and the support we receive, or they receive from the community, matters. So, thank you all for being so supportive.
Okay, the second proclamation we had this evening is something that we read into the record every year, but it's important that we do it. And if you live in Haverde Grace, you understand Flood Awareness Month. So, please, indulge me as I'm required to read this into the record. City of Haverde Grace proclamation for Flood Awareness Month, whereas the City of Haverde Grace has experienced severe weather in the past in the form of extreme rainfall, hurricane system events, or other events resulting in flooding along Chesapeake Bay, Susquehanna River, and our inland streams, such as Lully Run, Gaches Creek, Fountain Run. This flooding has caused damage and flood losses to homes and buildings in all areas where they are high-risk special flood hazard areas or low-to-moderate risk flood zones. And whereas the City of Haverde Grace is a voluntary participant in the National Flood Insurance Program that provides residents with the opportunity to protect themselves against flood loss through the purchase of flood insurance at reduced insurance premium rates, as well as setting higher regulatory standards to reduce the flood risk and potential flood damage to their property. And whereas the reduction of loss of life and property damage can be achieved when appropriate flood preparedness, control, and mitigation measures are taken before flood. And whereas public education and awareness of potential weather hazards and methods for protection of critical to health, safety, and welfare of residents. The City of Haverde Grace has declared the Month of April 2025 as Flood Awareness Month to promote awareness and increase knowledge of flood risk, the availability of flood insurance, flood protection methods, and how to prepare for emergencies. Now therefore, we, the mayor and City of Haverde Grace, in coordination with Maryland Resiliency Partnership, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Flood Awareness Month in the City of Haverde Grace, and further encourage the citizens of Haverde Grace to increase their knowledge on how to protect themselves and their property from floods. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go to item 11, presentations. This evening, we have no presentations. Item 12, resolutions. This evening, we have one resolution. Council President.
Mr. Mayor, Council Citizens, I move to introduce a resolution concerning approving a lease agreement for exercise equipment.
Second.
Council, I have a motion by the Council President, second by Councilmember Shenegas. This is a motion to introduce a resolution. Any questions or comments on introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion to introduce resolution carries six zero and affirmative. Council, this is gonna be known as Resolution 2025-06. Resolution 2025-06. A resolution by the mayor and City Council of Haverde Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland and Sections 33 and 34 of the Haverde Grace City Charter to approve a lease agreement for exercise equipment. Council, I have a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Booker, second by the Council President. Questions or comments? Council President.
This lease for the equipment is, we have a very small little gem for the employees, and the contract we were able to work out with this lease agreement, it's very lucrative for us, and then at the end of our contract, we'll be able to purchase the equipment for a dollar a piece. It's gonna work out exceptionally well. It helps keep our healthcare costs down in the city with the employees.
Any other questions or comments? Yes.
I know that this was part of our budget amendment. What was the year that we originally passed? We included it in the budget in, it wasn't 2024, it was the year before that, right?
So, we started a Employee Wellness Budget Line Item 22 or 23, somewhere around there. And we have admittedly struggled for a little while to find a vendor that could meet our needs at the price, at a price point that we could afford until now. So, the, you'll see in the documents in there, it's a $5,000 deposit that we'll be making, and then it's under $900 a month lease for 36 months for the equipment, and as Council President said, at the end of it, we will own it for the sum of $1. So, it's, we feel it's gonna be a big benefit to our employees, for sure.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Council, we're gonna do a roll call. Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Councilmember Booker.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas.
Yes.
Council President.
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
By roll call vote of six zero and affirmative, City Council Ordinance 1179 is adopted on second reading. Thank you, Council. Item B, Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, fellow Councilmembers, I move to introduce on second reading ordinance number 1180.
Council, I have a motion by Councilmember Robertson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Booker. This is a motion to introduce ordinance 1180 on second reading. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ordinance 1180 carries, I'm sorry, ordinance 1180 is introduced on second reading by a vote of six zero and affirmative. Ordinance 1180 is an ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Haverde Grace by the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland and Sections 33 and 34 of the Haverde Grace City Charter for the purpose of amending the city budget for fiscal year 2025 to address the reallocations of funds for the City of Haverde Grace for fiscal year 2025. Council, do I have a motion to adopt 1179 on second reading?
So moved.
Second. Motion by the Council President, second by Councilmember Jones. Questions or comments? Sir.
Mr. Mayor, just for the edification of the viewing audience, this is a budget amendment to basically receive DNR funds from a state grant, and those funds now, you know, have, this is an administrative process to basically give those funds a line item in the budget for the receipt, and then transfer it to the expenditure side of the House in the budget.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Robertson. Any other questions or comments? We'll do a roll call vote on 1179. Councilmember Booker, how say you?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas.
Yes.
Council President.
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
By roll call vote of six zero and affirmative, City Council Ordinance 1179 is adopted on second reading. Thank you, Council. Item B, Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, fellow Councilmembers, I move to introduce on second reading ordinance number 1180.
Council, I have a motion by Councilmember Robertson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Booker. This is a motion to introduce ordinance 1180 on second reading. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ordinance 1180 carries, I'm sorry, ordinance 1180 is introduced on second reading by a vote of six zero and affirmative. Ordinance 1180 is an ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Haverde Grace by the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland and Sections 37 of the Haverde Grace City Charter for the purpose of amending the city budget for fiscal year 2025 to address the reallocations of funds for the City of Haverde Grace for fiscal year 2025. Council, do I have a motion to adopt 1180 on second reading?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Robertson, and that motion is second by Councilmember Booker. Questions or comments? Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, just for the edification of the viewing audience, this is a budget amendment to take and reprogram funding from a project that has some available balance and reallocate that funding to water line replacements that are a little bit over what was anticipated when the budget was first adopted, as well as transfer from Fund 9 to Fund 1 to help with the downtown infrastructure that's going on right now.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Robertson. Any further questions or comments? We'll do a roll call vote on ordinance 1180. Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas.
Yes.
Council President.
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Councilmember Booker.
Yes.
By roll call vote of six zero and the affirmative, City Council Ordinance 1180 is adopted on second reading. Thank you, Council. Item B, Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, fellow Councilmembers, I move to introduce on second reading ordinance number 1180.
Council, I have a motion by Councilmember Robertson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Booker. This is a motion to introduce ordinance 1180 on second reading. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ordinance 1180 carries, I'm sorry, ordinance 1180 is introduced on second reading by a vote of six zero and affirmative. Ordinance 1180 is an ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Haverde Grace by the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland and Sections 37 of the Haverde Grace City Charter for the purpose of amending the city budget for fiscal year 2025 to address the reallocations of funds for the City of Haverde Grace for fiscal year 2025. Council, do I have a motion to adopt 1180 on second reading?
So moved.
Second. Motion by the Council President, second by Councilmember Jones. Questions or comments? Sir.
Mr. Mayor, just for the edification of the viewing audience, this is a budget amendment to basically receive DNR funds from a state grant, and those funds now, you know, have, this is an administrative process to basically give those funds a line item in the budget for the receipt, and then transfer it to the expenditure side of the House in the budget.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Robertson. Any other questions or comments? We'll do a roll call vote on 1179. Councilmember Booker, how say you?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas.
Yes.
Council President.
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Councilmember Booker.
Yes.
By roll call vote of six zero and the affirmative, City Council Ordinance 1180 is adopted on second reading. Thank you, Council. Item B, Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, fellow Councilmembers, I move to introduce on second reading ordinance number 1180.
Council, I have a motion by Councilmember Robertson, second by the Council President. Questions or comments on the introduction of ordinance 1179 on second reading? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ordinance 1180 carries, I'm sorry, ordinance 1180 is introduced on second reading by a vote of six zero and affirmative. Ordinance 1180 is an ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Haverde Grace by the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland and Sections 37 of the Haverde Grace City Charter for the purpose of amending the city budget for fiscal year 2025 to address the reallocations of funds for the City of Haverde Grace for fiscal year 2025. Council, do I have a motion to adopt 1180 on second reading?
So moved.
Second. Motion by the Council President, second by Councilmember Jones. Questions or comments? Sir.
Mr. Mayor, just for the edification of the viewing audience, this is a budget amendment to basically receive DNR funds from a state grant, and those funds now, you know, have, this is an administrative process to basically give those funds a line item in the budget for the receipt, and then transfer it to the expenditure side of the House in the budget.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Robertson. Any other questions or comments? We'll do a roll call vote on 1179. Councilmember Booker, how say you?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
Council President.
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Councilmember Booker.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas.
Yes.
Council President.
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
By roll call vote of six zero and the affirmative, City Council Ordinance 1179 is adopted on second reading. Thank you, Council. Item B, Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, fellow Councilmembers, I move to introduce on second reading ordinance number 1180.
Council, I have a motion by Councilmember Robertson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Booker. This is a motion to introduce an ordinance on first reading. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ordinance 1180 carries, I'm sorry, ordinance 1180 is introduced on second reading by a vote of six zero and affirmative. Ordinance 1180 is an ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Haverde Grace by the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland and Sections 37 of the Haverde Grace City Charter for the purpose of amending the city budget for fiscal year 2025 to address the reallocations of funds for the City of Haverde Grace for fiscal year 2025. Council, do I have a motion to adopt 1180 on second reading?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Robertson, and that motion is second by Councilmember Booker. Questions or comments? Council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, just for the edification of the viewing audience, this is a budget amendment to take and reprogram funding from a project that has some available balance and reallocate that funding to water line replacements that are a little bit over what was anticipated when the budget was first adopted, as well as transfer from Fund 9 to Fund 1 to help with the downtown infrastructure that's going on right now.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Robertson. Any further questions or comments? We'll do a roll call vote on ordinance 1180. Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas.
Yes.
Council President.
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
By roll call vote of six zero and the affirmative, City Council Ordinance 1180 is adopted on second reading. Thank you. Item C, ordinance concerning method of funding for a host company, and this is gonna be a first reader. Council President.
Mr. Mayor, citizens, I move to introduce ordinance concerning establishing a method for funding the host, Susquehanna Host Company for first reading.
Second.
Council, I have a motion by the Council President, second by Councilmember Boyer. This is a motion to introduce an ordinance on first reading. Are there any questions on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion to introduce an ordinance carries six zero and affirmative. Council, this will be known as Ordinance 1181, 1181, an ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Haverde Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland and Sections 33 and 34 of the Haverde Grace City Charter to establish the method by which annual contributions will be calculated for budget purposes for the Susquehanna Host Company. Council, do I have a motion to adopt 1181 on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, and second by the Council President. Questions or comments? Sir.
I don't think there's really much we need to say. We had a good discussion earlier. Just want to point out that it's 3.6 cents per $100 on the tax base. So, it's actually very miniscule in our, from the money we bring in on taxes on the properties, but I think it's well-deserved, and we can look in the future of amending that, but right now, this is what we've, the formula we've come up with. Thank you.
I just want to clarify that the formula we come up with the funding is for the funding they requested.
Yeah.
So, I'm just letting you, it's not like arbitrary, we just pick something and they live with it. They actually asked for that funding, and that's one letter by no, that tax rate goes to meet the funding. Thank you.
Either way, it's a hell of a bargain.
You're correct, that is correct.
And what was the original date of the, what year was that, 2010? The original date?
The two cent?
For the two cents.
Two cents, the two-cent resolution, 20, like 2001, 2002, something like that, it's pretty, it predates since I was on council, 2008.
Okay.
In 2010, we, when their funding was going down because property values were going down, we, the council at that time drafted a resolution called Maintenance of Effort. It's the same thing that happens at a Board of Education, there's a law that says you can't give the Board of Education any less than you did the year before. So, we sustained the host company funding, that level funding, but actually in this ordinance, that's all captured in there. So, the two-cent and the level funding were all done by resolution, now it's gonna be codified. So, that's all in there, that they can't get less than they did the year before. So, it's kinda hard to operate a life-saving company when you get less money than you did the year before, but, yeah, exactly. So, that's in there. So, any other questions or comments? Okay, this is ordinance 1181, and we're gonna do a roll call vote, this is first reading. Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas.
Yes.
Council President.
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Councilmember Booker.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
By roll call vote of six zero and the affirmative, ordinance 1181 is adopted on first reading. Council, do I have a motion to adopt 1182 on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by the Council President, and that motion is second by Councilmember Shenegas. Questions or comments?
Yes.
This amendment is meant to establish subdivision regulations. Line 41 will be added to the Section 173-7. We will be adding, "In addition, the Director of Planning may, after consultation with the Director of Public Works, administratively review proposed subdivisions and waive the requirements of the chapter for any subdivision which is needed solely for the relocation of utilities, or for the establishment, or expansion of public rights of way involving roads, utilities, or railway transportation."
Thank you, Councilmember Shenegas. Any other questions or comments?
I just want to note that the planning department, there's a lot of good work that went into this, and I appreciate that, so job well done, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Booker. Any other comments? Okay, Council, we're gonna do a roll call vote on ordinance 1182. Councilmember Shenegas.
Yes.
Council President.
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Councilmember Booker.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
By roll call vote of six zero and the affirmative, ordinance 1182 is approved on first reading. And Council President, also public hearing on April 21st?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Council, we're going to do a roll call vote on ordinance 1182. Councilmember Shenegas.
Yes.
Council President.
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Councilmember Boger.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
By roll call vote of six zero and the affirmative, ordinance 1182 is approved on first reading. And Council President, also public hearing on April 21st?
Yes, sir.
Okay, ordinance 1182 will have its public hearing at the next council meeting, April 21st at seven o'clock. Okay, our final ordinance for this evening is another first reader and I'll hand it off to Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to introduce an amendment to Chapter 198 of the ordinance concerning water and sewer relating to grease, oil, and inceptors for the first reading.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jones. Have a motion introduced ordinance by Councilmember Jones. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Boger. This is a motion to introduce an ordinance. Are any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion to introduce ordinance carries six zero in affirmative. This is an ordinance by the Mayor and City Council of Haverdy Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article 11E of the Maryland Constitution, the Local Government of the Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland and Sections 33 and 34 of the Haverdy Grace City Charter to amend one, Chapter 198, Water and Sewer. Council, this will be known as ordinance 1183, ordinance 1183. Do I have a motion to adopt 1183 on first reading?
No move.
Second.
Motion by the Council President, second by Councilmember Shenegas. Questions or comments? Councilmember Jones.
Yes, so I'm going to let Ms. Eschak and also Joe Conley talk about this a little bit, but we needed to do this in order to protect our sewer system and also to make sure that taxpayers aren't paying the bill to make any fixes. And I just wanted to know if you could speak on that a little bit more.
Yes, Councilmember, thank you. So this was meant to codify what was in effect already a practice. And when we were looking at the, when Mr. Conaway and I were looking at the city code, it didn't fit neatly into fees. It really is a reimbursement in the event that the city went forward and made the corrections to the grease trap or whatever remediation measures. And it just makes clear that if the city does do that, those fees can be collected back from, by the city from the responsible user or owner of the property. And I would turn it over to Mr. Conaway if he had anything to add.
Yes, this makes it, makes it easier for the city to, to invoice a business owner, homeowner, that we find out through investigation that, that it was caused from grease in our system. Typically, when we have these issues, it's always, well, the grease isn't from us. But unfortunately, if you have grease in your clean out, it comes from your house or your business. And it's, it's very easy to identify. And like, like April said, that, you know, the verbiage we had didn't give us the, you know, the teeth to, to be able to invoice a homeowner, property owner directly for the, for the time and, and effort that the city and city personnel put on to clear, to clear the grease, grease from the, the main or lateral.
Thank you both. Councilmember Jones, any further questions? Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Council President.
I do want to point out again and thank Ms. Parsons for her suggestions. We will be reviewing those and possibly making amendments in the coming days. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I'm, I'm not going to throw any more grease down my drain, that's for sure. And I'll be fitting to pay a fine.
My grease dumping days are over.
That's, that's, that's good, that's good advice. Don't pour it down a drain. Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a serious problem we have in the city is the grease. When, when you dump even, you know, a couple bacon grease down your sink, it does collect somewhere, trust me. It may not look like, and turn a hot water on, thinking it's going to liquefy it down the place, just pushes, just pushes down another foot. That's it. So anyway, it's more of a business issue than anything else, but it does happen with residential too, so. Okay, fair enough. We have this ordinance on first reader. We have a motion by the Council President, second by Councilmember Shenegas, to adopt it on first reading. Council President.
Yes.
Councilmember Robertson.
Yes.
Councilmember Boger.
Yes.
Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Shenegas.
Yes.
By roll call vote of six zero in the affirmative, City Council ordinance 1183, 1183 is adopted on first reading. And Council President, would you like to also put this at the next council meeting? Okay, public hearing on 1183 will be at the next council meeting, April 21st at seven o'clock. Okay, that'll do it for the ordinances this evening. We're going to move on in our agenda to item 14, excuse me, item 14. Old business. This evening we have no old business. And we'll go to new business and we have a couple of things on the docket here for new business, item A, and I'm going to hand it off to Dr. Ritchie.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, for your consideration, this evening is a geocash permit. It is being applied for by the Haverdy Grace Maritime Museum. Specifically, they will have five different locations. It is going to be a multi-cash trail to promote ecotourism activities. And the trail is going to be used for museum field trip participants and for the general public. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ritchie. The Council to have a motion to approve. Motion by the Council President.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Shenegas. Questions or comments? Sir.
Actually, I think it's a little unfair. They give us the location of everything it was going to be. That's it.
That's why I didn't mention them specifically in my comments, but yes, they are in your packet.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Geocash permit and license agreement carries six zero in the affirmative. Item B, Dr. Ritchie.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, for your consideration, we have six events this evening. Council President, are you comfortable with them being on a consent calendar? So the first special event is Blessing by the Bay. We heard a comment about that earlier during citizen comments. It is May 4th from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM at Concord Point Park. The second event is Bayside Family Wellness Fair, May 10th with a rain date of June 1st from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Concord Point Park. The third event is the Second Sunday Hymnsing, June 8th, July 13th, August 10th, and September 14th from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM at Tidings Park. The fourth event is Wave of Light Remembrance Ceremony on October 15th, which we also heard comments about today, from 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM at Concord Point Park. The fifth event is the 62nd Haverdy Grace Annual Art Show from October 18th through 19th, 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Concord Point Park and Tidings Memorial Park. And the last event for your consideration is the Haverdy Grace Fall Fest on October 25th from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM on Franklin Street between North Union Avenue and St. John's Street. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ritchie. Council, do I have a motion to approve these events?
Second.
Motion by the Council President, second by Councilmember Jones. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion to approve the special events as listed are approved six zero in the affirmative. Thank you, Dr. Ritchie. We'll go to item 16, our Director's Reports, and right back to Dr. Ritchie, Director of Administration.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, colleagues, citizens. It is very nice to see this room. Like every time we have a council meeting, there's more and more people. It's also very nice to see several of the candidates that we have for the city council election here in attendance tonight also. So, City Council, I would like to thank you for approving that resolution for the gym equipment. It's been a long time coming and I know our employees will appreciate that greatly. So thank you very much. We have a couple of events come, going on at the Star Center between now and the next time we meet. On October 12th, Foreigner's Journey, featuring Constantine Maroulis, will be performing classic hits by Foreigner and Journey. That's at 8:00 PM. On April 19th, Beginnings, the Ultimate Chicago Tribute Band will be performing at the Star Center at 8:00 PM. And then registration is open for the Star Summer Camps. These include Finding Nemo, Academy of Wizardry, Musical Theater Camp, Superhero Academy, Artist Camp, Princess Dance Camp, Jurassic Camp, Decades of Disney Camp, Space Camp, Aerial Arts, Pinkalicious Camp, Let's Code Camp, Filmmaking Camp, Freestyle Fairy Tales, and Galactic Apprentices. What are the age ranges on these summer camps? They range from, I think it's like four years old to 18. It just, I mean, not, I'm assuming, you know, kind of depends on your interests, but, you know. But yeah, they span the whole spectrum.
So not 39?
If you're interested in Pinkalicious, we might be able to make an exception for you if you would like.
I'm just saying, a lot of those sound like fun.
Actually, we qualify. So there are, there are too many other events to, to list that's going on in our city, but you can learn about all of them at explorehaverdygrace.com. I do want to let the public know, I asked our Director of Grants and Capital Projects, Patrick Sipold, if he had any updates regarding the downtown project. He did ask me to share that there will be temporary traffic lights being installed at Five Points. They're going to be utilized to facilitate two-way traffic as they're going to do that intersection, kind of half of it at one time. So the two-way traffic are going to have to share one lane. So we have these special traffic lights that are going to be coming in to help facilitate that and make it safe. I do want to thank all of the city leadership team, but especially our Finance Director, Abdul Abdi, and the Senior aide to the Mayor, Adam Raczynski, for the work they've done assisting Mayor Martin with the preparation of his municipal budget. It's been a lot of work. You guys have been great, so thank you. I do want to thank Ben Martarana for stepping up and filling in as Acting Director of Planning over the last couple of months. Ben is such a great person to work with and we are so fortunate to have him and have had the opportunity to use some of his skills and his nearly 50 years' worth of experience doing this. We're, he's been a joy to work with and we're just so blessed to have him. And I do also want to thank the Planning Department as well. They have really stepped up in, for these last couple of months. They've taken on additional duties in order to make sure our citizens are still taken care of, and I really appreciate their efforts. And then lastly, I would like to welcome Jeff Goins. Jeff, welcome to the team. You're a very impressive person. I think people here are going to find that out pretty shortly. His education and experience fits so well into the city's needs for our Planning Director. And I'm really glad you're a part of our team and welcome aboard, Jeff. And that concludes my comments for the evening. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Ritchie. Since you brought up Mr. Goins, let's go to Mr. Goins. It's his turn on the agenda and welcome to our new Plan Director. And sir, if you have anything to report, please tell us. And also, if you get a chance, this is a chance to say hi to the public and let everybody know who you are. Thank you.
Definitely. First off, before I go into the report, I'd just like to thank the Mayor and Council for giving me this opportunity. You have a very unique, charming, and beautiful town here, and I look forward to working with members of council and the mayor, as well as the citizens. I've worked all across the country, in California, Georgia, North Carolina, and Maryland. And I have to say that your community is one of the most unique I've come across and worked for. So I'm just really excited to be here and I know there's lots of growth that's occurring. And I'm just glad to be a part of that and I'll do my best to preserve where appropriate, but also promote growth where appropriate. So thank you for the welcome and I'm excited to be here. So going into the report, just in terms of building permits for the month of March, we had 40 building permits. Fifteen of those were new construction. Ten more renovations slash additions. This also includes deck permits. And then 15 were other, which include shed, fence, antennas, solar panels, hot tubs, and other minor permits. Just for an update in terms of comparison for the last three years, and just in terms of the first nine months of each fiscal year. In the first nine months of the 2023 fiscal year, we had six single-family detached building permits, 41 townhomes, and two commercial for a total of 49. And then, as I mentioned, of course, I'm sure you're all aware of the growth that's been occurring in the community. In fiscal year 2024, the single-family detached permits increased to 37 from six, townhomes to 76 from 41. And then we had 27 condos up from zero for a total of 140 compared to 49 for 2023. So a substantial increase. And then for fiscal year 2025, single-family detached increased to 45, townhomes to 86, condos stayed the same at 27. We had three commercial for a total of 161. So again, increasing over the 140 from the previous year. So, and of course, that's the first nine months of each fiscal year. So hopefully the growth continues. That's very impressive. Any questions?
Any questions? Sir, perfect. We appreciate it and welcome, sir.
Thank you very much.
You betcha. We're going to go to Mr. Abdi, our Director of Finance. Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers and citizens of Haverdy Grace, good evening. I also like to welcome a fellow Howard County alum. I was also a Howard County Department of Finance. It's good to see, you know, a fellow alum joining the, the city. So I look forward to working with you in the future. Before I get started in terms of financial condition, I also want to thank the council members for approving ordinance 1179 and 1180. Onto the financial condition, starting off with the general fund. The fund balance currently stands at $4,254,700. It is down a little over 1.2 million since my last reporting on March 17th. In terms of the beginning balance, it hasn't changed. It's currently standing at $2,349,600. Revenues are up a little over $887,000 and currently stands at $21,774,800. In terms of the expenditures for the general fund, it is up a little over 2.1 million. And total currently stands at $19,869,700. Onto Water and Sewer Fund, the fund balance currently stands at $5,439,500, which is down $486,900 since my last reporting. In terms of the beginning balance, it has not changed. It currently stands at $1,746,800. For revenues, it is up a little over 1, 1 million and currently stands at $16,205,000. In terms of expenditures to date, it is over $12,512,300. Since my last reporting, the expenditures have been up a little over 1.5 million. The last fund, the Marina Fund, Fund 8, the fund balance is at $1,550,500, which is down $20,500 since my last reporting. The beginning balance has not changed. It currently stands at $761,900. Revenues to date are up $8,700 at $723,900. Revenue, expenditures to date are up, since my last reporting, $29,200. Currently stands at an total of $435,300. That concludes my financial condition for those three funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abdi. Any questions for Abdul? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Good evening, Mr. Conaway, our Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, residents. I too, Jeff, like to welcome you on board. You're going to find out, I mean, I've been here 26 years. There's a reason I've been here for 26 years. I think you're going to love working here, your coworkers, the environment. And I look, I look forward to working with you and with a lot of stuff that, you know, DPW and planning co-mingle. Two quick updates. Our new superintendent, the wastewater treatment plant started today. His name is David Demilio. He's from the Maryland Environment, Environmental Service. He brings about 40 years of experience of wastewater. He met with me this morning. I went over my expectations talking down to wastewater, introduced him to the, to the staff, and then I left him with his, his briefing and talked to him this afternoon. It seemed to went very well. Looking forward to, you know, positive things from him. And we will have our Dumpster Day on April 26th at the usual location at the end of Bluesbury and Wilson Street, 8:00 AM to noon. I believe we'll have eight dumpsters. Hopefully, they all fill. If not, then we'll do it again next year. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Conaway? Thank you, Joe. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers, citizens. Jeff, welcome on board. So a couple of quick things, the promenade. So we continue to receive complaints and City Hall continues to receive complaints in regards to dogs being on the promenade. It is very clearly marked that the dogs are not supposed to be on there. And so we're asking that our citizens abide by the signs and don't bring our officers involved in this. And so hopefully we will, compliance will move forward and we wouldn't want to have to cite anyone in regards to that type of violation. So secondly, and lastly, I know I probably sound like a broken record, but our officers are handling a tremendous amount of fraud and scam calls. And I'm not kidding when I say that it's probably seven to 10 times per week that we're handling these type of complaints. These criminals are very sophisticated. And then you combine that with just their, their preying on people that might have a little bit of like a cognitive decline. And so they use social media, phone calls, emails, texts. They're asking for people's personal information. They, they come up with these schemes of supposed debt or unauthorized charges and they obtain their banking information. They'll promise sweepstakes or lottery winner, but you have to provide ways for them to be able to send the money. And in this last case from last week, they, they hacked into this gentleman's computer and they pretty much took his computer ransom. And so then they, they ransomed him for money and he was pretty much prompted to go get large sums of money and then go to a crypto ATM. And once the money was uploaded into that ATM, it is gone. There's no, you know, retrieval of that money. And, and we're not talking about small amounts of money here. This is tens of thousands of dollars that are, you know, being, you know, stolen from our citizens. So again, just, we all have people that we watch out for in our lives and so we have to be proactive. So, you know, you have family members, you should be having, you know, conversations in, in regards to them. You know, if something were to happen, avoid blaming and, you know, shaming them. You need to get a hold of us immediately. And we can have some resources that are available to help kind of get to the root of the problem. In addition to the, the walk-ins and the calls that we receive, we receive calls or referrals from the Department of Aging at least weekly. They come to my email and these are things that the banking industry sends to the Department of Aging saying that they're suspicious, that they feel as though something is going on with this particular customer and they want us to help to make sure that they're okay. So there are resources available through law enforcement, again, the Department of Aging, and then financial professionals. So just, you know, again, be proactive and be vigilant against this continual problem in our community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Chief Crass. Any questions for John? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to go to item 17, Business from the Okay, we're gonna go to item seventeen, business from the mayor. And tonight's business will be the official handing the council the budget for 2026. And if I could have some assistance with that, please? So normally what happens, if this is the first time you've seen us, my staff and I, we work from January until now to produce a budget, and it's officially given to the council at a council meeting like tonight. Council will have a chance to look at it, and then we'll have some public work sessions where the council can interact with each other, interact with my staff and my department heads, and discuss funding for various departments. This budget will be posted online by tomorrow, correct? So the general, so the public has a chance to see the budget that I hand the council. Again, this is a, try to explain this. So this is the mayor's budget. The council wishes to make changes. They can, but again, they have to do that just like any other legislative act that they have to do. So it's a proposed budget as it is. So if you look it up online, it's the proposed budget by my administration, and then council has a chance to look at it, ask questions, and add or take away or however it goes. And then normally what happens, after a couple of work sessions on the budget, we'll introduce the budget as an ordinance in the first meeting in June. There'll be a public hearing on the second Monday in the month of June, and then the third Monday in June, the council will adopt their final version of the budget. Just want to let everybody know how that works. But tonight is the first night that council actually gets the operating budget, proposed operating budget for 2026. And there's usually a cover letter that comes from the mayor to the council and to the citizens. And what I'll be reading right now into the record is my cover letter. Memorandum, City of Havertide Grace, from Mayor William T. Martin to the citizens and the council. The City of Havertide Grace is currently positioned to experience an unprecedented period of prosperity. This is a result of forward-thinking decision-making and responsible planning. Because of these decisions, the city has yielded substantial returns, which include an increased quality of life for our citizens and increased property values. To continue this progress, my administration remains committed to building strong partnerships with public and private entities to ensure critical projects continue or brought to completion. I would like to thank the city council for their past support and collaboration. I ask that you take a moment to celebrate our achievements while also supporting ongoing efforts through the approval of this budget. In 2020, with the approval of our citizens, the city secured fifteen million dollars through a bond sale. These funds have allowed us to modernize and upgrade our water and sewer infrastructure, which has led to the long-term sustainability of these systems. Such a capital funding opportunity will not be available again until fiscal year 2028. Additionally, in 2021, the city received over thirteen million dollars from the Federal American Rescue Plan. With the city council's support, these funds were directed to replacing and upgrading some of the city's oldest infrastructure and restoring our historic downtown area. Upon completion, these initiatives will elevate the level of service we can provide to our residents and customers and serve as a powerful economic generator. These investments have already caught the private sector's attention, creating considerable new interest in our business opportunities and investments within our city. I would also like to note that since 2020, the state of Maryland has demonstrated its confidence in our city by investing over one million dollars towards the Havertide Grace Star Center. I am pleased to announce that this year, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars was also secured from the 2025 Maryland General Assembly Session. With all that said, I would like to thank and reiterate my confidence in the men and women who make up the city's workforce. They are the ones responsible for positive advancement of our city. Without them and the sacrifices they make, we would not have been available to achieve any of this progress. It's a privilege and honor to serve and be the leader of this exceptional team. The fiscal year 2026 budget executive overview. The general fund is expected to begin fiscal year with a one point five-five million-dollar balance with budget revenues estimated at twenty million, a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase. I am proposing the current tax rate remain the same at point five six five per one hundred dollars of assessed value, fifty-six and a half cents. This will generate four hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred dollars in additional property taxes due to increased property values. This will fund a five percent increase in uniformed officers' salaries above and beyond their annual step increase. Overall spending is budgeted at twenty-three point three million with a twenty-one point six million for operating expenses. A one point six million increase due to personnel and inflation, while personnel costs will rise by a hundred and three thousand dollars or point six percent due to healthcare savings and retirements. The Water and Sewer Fund, also known as Fund Nine, is expected to start with a two point three six million dollar balance, contributing four point one million to capital programs and debt service. Residential development is projected at a hundred new connections. While we are unable to go back to the bond market again until 2028, our momentum will continue. Through the de-aging water and sewer infrastructure, my goal to proactively plan for funding future infrastructure projects, I am establishing a capital reserve fund within the Water and Sewer Fund. I am therefore increasing the water rates from seven dollars and fifty cents by fifty cents to eight dollars per one thousand gallons of water, and directing that an estimated three hundred and forty thousand dollars in additional water revenues to the capital reserve fund. This fund will establish a minimum target of one year of water and sewer system depreciation. It is my intention that it will be revised annually based on the prior year's depreciation. As the City of Havertide Grace has begun selling water to our neighboring municipality, Aberdeen, and as I have a strong commitment to transparency, I have added an Aberdeen Water Agreement line item to the Fund Nine budgeted revenues. The Marine Facilities, also known as Fund Eight, will begin with a nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar surplus, with revenues expected to exceed expenses by almost twenty thousand dollars. Considering the volume and frequency of dredging the city has needed to complete in the past, I am funding a twenty thousand dollar engineering study to inform the Swan Harbor Farms dredge material management plan. I trust you will find this preliminary budget is a solid foundation for our continued efforts to improve Havertide Grace through managing growth and protecting our critical water resources. I thank you for your ongoing support and continued partnership and joint stewardship. Council President, I have included in your folder a suggested schedule of public work sessions. This is just penciled in. I mean, if the council at large has issues with making these dates, we can always replan them. However, I do have the first public work session penciled in for next Monday, the fourteenth.
All the dates fit with me, council? If any of the dates don't, just let me know.
Okay. I mean, it's okay if we miss one council member or something like that, but if we don't have a, if we don't, I mean, if we don't have half of us there, there's no point in having it. We can reschedule it. But I put the dates in, so right now, tentatively speaking, we have a public work session on April fourteenth at six o'clock, which is next Monday right here at the chamber, and then another public work session on April twenty-eighth, also at six o'clock. So next Monday on the fourteenth at six o'clock here, and April twenty-eighth here at six o'clock. At these work sessions, the public is invited to observe, watch, to listen to the council But there's also time for public comment at any council meeting. So if you see something on the, you know, if you go online and you look at the budget and something pops in your head, like, hey, I have a question about that, you can come to any council meeting under item six on the agenda and state your concern. So just letting you know, it's, even though these work sessions are like council only with public to view it, there's other opportunities to get your questions answered or at least voice your concern. So again, council, these are two public work sessions. They can add work sessions if they want, if they feel necessary. All depends what the council's pleasure is and what the council president wants to do. So basically, we generated almost, by keeping our tax rate the same, we generated almost another half a million dollars, because as I said earlier this evening under citizen comment, every three years, a state of Maryland taxation assessment comes out. They're called triannual assessments, and in bad times, your property value goes down, and good times, your property value goes up. And if you have, if you keep the same tax rate and people's property values go up, the city gets more revenue. There's also been a lot of construction in Greenway Farms and Bulli Rock and things like that, that also contributed to that revenue. But I want everyone to know, I mentioned it, and this is where Chief Crass, and I know this has been a big concern of yours. It's no secret, we live in a day and age where you really got to convince a man or a woman to be a police officer. And the responsibilities that they have to carry with them now, just, you know, just the dangers of their job, the responsibilities, you know, every I has to be dotted, every T has to be crossed. We have really good men and women in our police department, but there's also much bigger agencies that are dangling a lot of money at our officers because they have the same problems too, whether it's Maryland State Police, Sheriff's Office, other counties, Maryland Transit Authority. And we have lost a handful of officers over the last two years to bigger agencies, but a lot of officers want to stay. But at the end of the day, they also have to provide for their families as well, and I'm giving these officers, I can't compete toe-to-toe, but I have to give officers something to say, look, you know, we're investing in you because, let me tell you how long it takes. When you invest in someone to go to the academy, and they come out of the academy, and they work for you for a year or two, and they leave, I mean, it costs more, a lot more money to bring a new officer than it does to give them a five percent raise. And so with this money we've had with additional revenue, I'm focusing the lion's share on that to take care of what I think is the biggest blessing we have in a city, which is a good quality of life when it comes to public safety. Nothing's perfect. This is still a city. You're still gonna get kids getting their bicycle stolen. You're still gonna, you know, wake up one day, see a dent in your car on the side road, but what I'm saying is, we all know we have a pretty good, and thanks to our police department, we have a pretty good city here where, at least I feel safe walking out at night, and I hope you do too. So we're investing in the police department to keep our men and women here, to show that we're investing in them. Because I've given this speech many times to the city employees, especially the men and women who wear a uniform. The city's kind of like a stock. You buy into a stock, and every time that you patrol the streets and you say hi to the citizens and you help the citizens out, and you walk around First Fridays and all of our events, and you make people feel safe, that pays off in dividends. People want to move here. They want to be here. Home values go up. And because of that, because of that public safety, I believe we should reinvest in the police department. It's time. It's been overdue. And I just wanted to make that clear because I did read it into record. Also, you probably, you know, I know everyone's ears went up when they heard a fifty cent increase in water. The water rate is being raised fifty cents for a thousand gallons from seven dollars fifty cents to eight dollars. The sewer rate at this moment is not being touched. So raising the water rate because the cost to make water keeps going up and up and up with materials, and that fifty cents right now is pretty important because it's gonna help establish a reserve fund for any capital projects that might arise as emergency in the next year. Other than that, everything you can be found on the city website tomorrow. My cover letter I just read into the record, that kind of explains a few things, as long as the preliminary numbers should all be available to the public tomorrow, but tonight, the council has the binder. And again, participate the public to catch up on it and ask questions as they feel fit. I want everyone to know that even though this is an extremely lean budget, it doesn't mean our city's lean. And what I mean by that, and I started off with my introductory, I have said for many years, I've always used the phrase that the best is yet to come, and we've invested in a lot in the city, various things, whether our parks, you know, our recreation, our downtown, arts and entertainment, water and sewer, public safety, whatever it was, we were always trying to get people and families to move here, to invest in our city and businesses to come here. And if you go downtown, you know, just Joseph's Department Store just sold, the old Larepin just sold, business, money follows money, businesses are coming, home values are getting So I believe from a city standpoint, we are where I was hoping I wanted to be ten years ago. We're where we wanted to be, and we're doing really well, and it's just going to get better. From a budget point of view, this budget has been really constrained and is very tight because everyone knows the cost of everything has gone up, everything. And so we're still at the same tax rate. I mean, we, I'm not afraid to raise taxes. I'm saying that as a citizen who lives among you. I'm not one of those, I mean, my first year I was mayor, in 2015, I raised taxes, a penny and a half. And the second year, I took it back down. But everyone understands you have to operate a government, you have to provide services. But we can still, we can still do it. I'm just saying it's a little tight, but we can still do it. I'm not afraid, and I know the council's not afraid to have that conversation either if we ever had to do that. But I'm handing them a budget where we didn't have to raise the tax rate. We can still provide all these services. It's just a little lean on some things. I'm gonna see where it takes us next year. The triannual assessments came out, and we got the money we're looking forward to bump, but I need to take care of, you know, some things first with my public safety. But other than that, just want everybody to know, just because the budget's lean doesn't mean our city's lean. I think our city's doing great. And one last thing I want to say is, I get questions all the time about the downtown restoration project. We're in a homestretch right now. If you've been downtown, you've seen the brick pavers are being laid down at the moment. They're starting to sidewalks on the South Block, one hundred block of Washington Street. It was mentioned a little earlier, we're gonna have, we're gonna have an automated traffic light at the Five Points, which is the intersection of Green Street and St. John's and Washington, only because, you know, we're gonna brick pave that whole area. So just bear with us. The folks are laying those bricks as fast as they can, but as carefully as they can because, you know, those bricks are, got a good eighteen-inch base to them. Joe Conway, what'd you say, eighteen-inch base on that?
Close to it.
Close to it? Yeah, it's designed to handle trucks. Yeah, I mean, it's designed to handle the weight. The bricks aren't going anywhere. Once they set them in there and they put that sand in there and all that stuff, they're gonna be pretty, it's gonna be pretty solid. So anyway, it's coming along. I don't know when it's gonna be finished. That's the million-dollar question. I tell, I'm starting to tell people now, it's gonna be done when it's done. And, you know, my favorite, one of my favorite guys, if anybody's ever been to our Colley's in Perryville, great guys over there. It's a bunch of Italian brothers, and they said to me, they said, hey, Mayor, when's the, when's the downtown gonna be done? And I looked at them, and I said, I don't know, man. I said, it's, he's like, he said to me, he said, Mayor, if you want to make a cake, you gotta break some eggs. So I'll never forget those guys saying that to me. So, no, the eggs are being broken, we're gonna put it back together, we're gonna put a beautiful cake together. It's gonna look really good, but I think people can now see what the vision is and the wider sidewalks and the trees. Once the trees start coming in, we'll put really good-sized trees in there, good six, seven-inch caliper trees, eighteen feet tall. We'll be able to put Christmas lights on right away next season. It'll look really good, up lights, a lot of shrubbery, they'll be self-watering, so it's gonna look fantastic. So citizens of Havertide Grace, thank you for your patience. I thank the businesses for their patience, but it's all gonna pay off in dividends. It's gonna look great, and I'm hoping within the next month or two, this should all be done, but they want to make sure it's done correctly. So thank you very much. I know it was long-winded tonight, but I had things I had to say. And with that, we're gonna go to comments from our colleagues here, and we're gonna start off with Councilmember Jones.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Great to see everyone here tonight. I also want to say welcome to Jeff. It's a pleasure to have you on the team, and I look forward to working with you. I just have a few comments this evening. On Saturday, the Havertide Grace Arts Collective had their annual Women's Voices in American Poetry event. It was in a new location this year at the Star Center, and I thought that was a great location for it. I do want to give a shout out to all of the many women who participated in this event, and especially to the crew and its organizer, Mr. Chris Providence, who is a staple in our community. I want to encourage everyone to go to the farmer's market, and also the First Friday starts last, next month. I enjoy First Friday so much. It's very, very different from Bel Air's First Friday. It's very, very different from Bel Air's First Friday, so I encourage everyone to come out and bring your families and enjoy that time as we start having those. And then I also wanted to say that I'm downtown every week. I try to walk through and talk to some business owners and I'm... I love the way downtown looks. So, just a shout out, I say it to Patrick every time I see him. Joe, your team's doing a great job, so it looks really great, and I just want to say congratulations to that. Dr. Ritchie also made a comment about how nice it is to see so many candidates running in the audience. And then, so lastly, I wanted to say that I'm also running again to be on the city council. So, with that, I will go to my next colleague.
All right. Thank you so much, Councilmember Jones. The mayor had to step out for a second. He'll be right back. Councilmember Boyer.
Thank you. Thank you for everybody for coming out tonight. I want to express appreciation to the mayor and everybody within the administration for your hard work on the budget. I look forward to reviewing it and seeing some of the great ideas that you've come up with for this next year. I want to say real quick, we are very blessed to be living in a community of such rich professionals so that when we have a time where we have a... We're down a man on the team, we can literally pull from people within our community and get them to step forward and help us out. And Ben Margarano is an excellent example of that. He has time and time again been that person who has come forward and done the yeoman's work when we really, really needed him. And to recruit and find wonderful people, and that brings me to you. I want to say thank you very much for joining us. We need to get you to move a little bit closer. There's great places here in Havertagh Grace for you to move into so you and your family can be Havertagh Gracians through and through. And finally, Chief, I need to share something with you two. My brother lives in Baltimore City, and he is getting emails specifically from the City of Havertagh Grace that are Come On! emails. I want to share them with you two. So, please, I don't... It's probably because of his relationship with me, but please spread it around to your family and friends who do not necessarily live in here in Havertagh Grace that there are emails going out, Come On!, and saying, "Please click through on this link in regards to Havertagh Grace," and let them know it's... We're not... We have nothing to do with any of these.
Pass is a big one.
Yeah. Yeah, this even has... He sent me with it, it even has a very professional-looking woman's photo with it too. So, I don't know how to pass it along to you, but I want to show it to you. And other than that, I hope you all have a wonderful week, and we'll see you here next Monday. Please all come.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Shinigus.
Good evening, Council President and colleagues and our administration and citizens in the audience and at home. It's lovely to start out this April with, again, another change in the weather. It's so unpredictable, but it wouldn't be Maryland if it wasn't. So, I love that we have the opportunity to, you know, gather and come together with events that take place. I am definitely looking forward to the citywide yard sale this April twelfth, eight to four P.M. It's always wonderful. I know that citizens buy from one another, but it's wonderful to be able to get out and interact and find that treasure that you're looking for or just see, meet new people. So, come on out. You don't have to have a yard sale to participate and, you know, just be safe out there when you're driving and looking. If you... I know there's a list online that you could find addresses, but even if you just, you know, if you're out and about and you see a handful of houses having a sale, get out and park and walk and visit instead of just, you know, looky-looing because it gets to be dangerous because people are excited about their treasures and not always paying attention. But I do encourage everybody to come on out. Also, this Friday evening, you are invited to Arts by the Bay Open Reception of the show called Portraits, Churches, and Trees. The reception will begin at six and last until eight P.M. And with that said, I'm thankful for our team here that pulls together, and I'm very excited to have and welcome Mr. Jeff Goins to our team. Thank you so much. You are going to be a great contribution and addition to our team. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Shinigus. Next up... Sorry?
I did forget to wish everybody a happy Easter.
There we go. Councilmember Robertson.
Hey. Thank you, Council President. Good evening, fellow council members, city staff, ladies and gentlemen here and at home. Thank you for being here and in this audience and staying well past all the business. That's not always the case. A lot of times, we're just up here talking to ourselves in an empty audience, so thank you. As many of you know, I'm still in the Army Reserve, so I just had to go on a twenty-five-day temporary duty assignment, so I missed the last council meeting. And then I came right back and got to spend the weekend in the freezing cold and rain up on a rifle range at Fort Denny Town Gap. Downside, it was freezing cold and rain. Upside, it was rifle range, so it's all good. But my days on this council are waning. I have two more meetings, two full meetings left, and then the CNA DA. So, I just want to take another opportunity to really thank the city staff here, Joe, Chief Abdul, and welcome, Jeff. It's good to see you again. For all you guys do, Chris, April, and Adam, who's not here right now, our volunteers. You know, this city really does run on the brain trust that exists within this city and people's willingness to work for nothing, to show up on a six-thirty or seven o'clock start time for a meeting and sometimes not end for a couple hours, whether it's the Board of Appeals, Planning Commission, Youth Commission, Arts Commission, et cetera. So, you know, really want to thank those folks for all they do, all their hard work. And we've got some candidates in the audience, so thank you for, you know, spending the cash and spending your time and putting yourself out there and your hat and the ring and your name on the line. So, thank you for doing that. I'm really glad to see that this year the citizens have a choice. So, again, thank you. Mr. Mayor, all the council members, that's it.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Robertson. Good evening, Councilmember Booker.
Good evening, Mayor, Directors, citizens in the audience and citizens who are viewing. First, I kind of want to echo Councilmember Robertson's sentiments in regard to volunteers. I actually, when I first took over, got elected, I should say, as a council member, I thought it was a volunteer position. I was like, "What? Okay." Because you volunteer for everything like all the time, and that's just kind of what we do. Director Goins, it's my sincere pleasure to welcome you with open arms. Your background is extensive and quite impressive, and I couldn't be... I could be happier to see you sitting there in that chair, so thank you, sir. I appreciate that. I've been honored to sit on a Eagle Scout Board of Review for Scout Trip Number Nine-Six-Seven. I'm not an Eagle Scout, but I was asked to sit on the board. I don't know if any of you are... Are you going to sit there? That's crazy. I mean, and so, you know, X amount of years in the military, several suffered tours of combat under my belt. I'm a little nervous about this one, I'm saying right now, so... But no, I'm actually looking forward to that. I think that's on April ninth at the American Legion, so I'm looking forward to that. I certainly am. I did attend the farmer's market this past weekend. I think it's phenomenal location. It was a lot of folks there shopping, spending some money. I think that's great. Don't forget to mark your calendar for the May the second, for the First Friday. First Friday is always a big blowout, and I think they're going to have that street open for downtown right there in front of the coffee shop. I think we can walk on that maybe for First Friday. I don't know. Are they going to be available? They can walk on the new bricks maybe for First... I mean, a little bit for First Friday, they can go out there and actually view it because I think most of it's going to be on Green Street, right, for First Friday?
Our intention is to have as much of it open to the public as possible.
That's what I'm talking about right there, yeah. That's why Grace is on top, right? And of course, don't forget about the May fourth, you know, the blessings of the bike, right? You heard from the Man of the Cloth himself, right, say, "You better show up," so you know you got to show up. Hey, also, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention May the third, which is... What is it, Matt? It's Defender's Day, of course it is. And so, you're going to see a lot of people out there who are, again, volunteering to make a great event happen. So, you'll see Matt, of course, he's on the Independence Day Commission. You'll see myself out there doing whatever that I'm told to do. I do really, really good with that. And I want to give a shout out to the Hartford County Chair on Veterans Commission. He actually came and saw myself and Chief. There's a new program out there for veterans. It's called, in short order, it's called the Deflection Team. And the VA Deflection Team is another tool in our tool belt comprised of VA police, veterans, justice outreach from case managers, suicide prevention and things of that nature, right? They kind of... And what they do, they have an organization and it's, again, it's a tool that officers can use when they deal with veterans that are in distress. It was a great presentation. It was short and very succinct, which I liked that. And Chief Crass, I just want to thank you for taking that and being on board with that program, so that's outstanding. And in closing, of course, I want to thank my police department, my mighty finance husband, Hana Host Company, EMS, first responders. They do, in fact, keep us safe at night. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Booker. And we're going to finish up the comments from the council president.
Mr. Mayor, Council, citizens all, I cannot believe not one of you guys mentioned the Easter egg hunt.
We're waiting for you.
We were saving that for you.
Yeah, well, thank you. So, Saturday, the nineteenth, Saturday, the nineteenth at high noon, and not like noon oh-six because you'll miss it. I'm talking, it goes quick. So, make sure you're out there down at Conquer Point Lighthouse. The mayor will be telling his dad jokes, and we'll just be out there hanging out, enjoying the nice weather. And for you candidates, it's a great place to come out, your shirts and everything and see people, and that's all done by our Recreation Council. So, just come on out for that. This Saturday at nine o'clock in the morning is opening day for Little League at Stansel Field. Another one of those time-sensitive things, get there early because, man, I tell you, there's nowhere to park. So, get there early. They're going to have a special guest this year for their seventy-seventh anniversary of the Havertagh Grace Little League, the only Little League in Hartford County. And then, I want to give a shout out. First off, thank you, Councilmember Booker and Councilmember Boyer for participating with Nine-Six-Seven for their Eagle Board of Review. Is that for Cassie? Yeah, she's a great kid, been working hard. She goes to Perryville.
Not for this Cassie, but the other...
I don't know. It's Casey and Cassie. Yeah, Cassie's in my daughter's troop. Cassie's in my daughter's troop. She works really hard, and she did her project and everything, student over in Perryville. But thank you so much for that. And maybe I can ask you to sit on my son's because he's doing his Eagle project this weekend. It's on Sunday. He's doing his Eagle project down at Veterans Park. He's doing pull-up bars. And I really want to give a shout out to Joe Conway for all the help he's been giving and just with all the Eagle Scout projects. I know that E.J. really helped me out with a lot, and you've really been coming through for me. Got another student, another Eagle candidate who wants to do more on the Clark Road Trail and a few other things around town. So, thank you so much for that. I really appreciate it. And Jeff, welcome to City of Havertagh Grace. That's it, sir.
Thank you very much, Council President. Appreciate it. And, okay, we've come to that part of the agenda, Item Nineteen, which is called adjournment. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Okay, let's go with Councilmember Booker and second by the Council President. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay.